Good morning and welcome to the Pollin County Board of Commissioners' June 28th, 2016 work session. We welcome you here. Thank you for all our guests being here, who we have in the elected officials.
Sheriff.
Sheriff, our Sheriff Gary Gudge. You've been pretty active the last couple of days here on event stuff. Probably always are, but I'll be here. Anyone else? Thank you all for being here. Marshall, will you bring him this time? Now for our invitation and pledge, we have Pastor Thomas Dixon, Jr. Pastor with Mount Stein, Mount Baptist Church. Would you stand with me if you're able?
Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. Father, please forgive us for our sins and our shortcomings and thank you for your Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Father, I pray that your divine faith will follow upon this meeting today and on each commissioner that is present. Bless them with your wisdom, knowledge, and power as they make decisions for this county. Lord, bless everyone that is present here today and bless Pollin County because we know that all power rests in your hands alone. May your presence always reside with the Board of Commissioners and may your presence always reside with Pollin County. Father, thank you for this day, for this hour, and for this moment. Please watch over us and keep us until we see each other again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will remind you to turn off all of your devices since it does end of production. Minutes of June 14th, 2016 work session minutes and the June 14th, 2016 board meeting minutes are available for your review. Under announcements, we are moving our July 26th meeting to, which is previously scheduled to July 25th, 2016 due to a runoff election. So we didn't want that to be disruptive and so everyone was available to meet on that Monday. So we will be changing that meeting. The Board of Commissioners now would like to recognize Samantha Morris for her receipt of the 2016 National Emergency Number Association Presidential Telecommunicator Award for her service contributions and dedicated to the National Emergency Number Association awarded by the President and Executive Board. If you'll come forward.
She wanted to just say goodbye to everybody there.
That's awesome. Dash, you'll tell us a little bit about, and you have to be proud like a proud papa.
Absolutely. So Samantha's been employed with us for six years now. And this started about three years ago, back when I was the President of the Georgia Chapter of the National Emergency Number Association. I got a call from the National Chapter and they wanted us to, each state, to appoint a couple of telecommunicators within the state to serve on what they call the Telecommunicators' Caucus. And the TC Caucus is a board at a national level that addresses telecommunicator issues throughout the nation. And so I searched within Georgia to put a message out to all of members and ask for volunteers. And so I ended up appointing one person from Cobb and then I appointed Samantha who volunteered. And I generally don't appoint people from our agency or something like that, but in this particular instance, it was a really good choice. And so Samantha hits the ground running. And then about three months ago, I got a call from the President of the National Organization and we were preparing to go to Indianapolis. We were there three weeks ago for the national conference. And so I got a call that said, hey, is Samantha coming to Indianapolis for the conference? And I said, as a matter of fact, she is coming. First time she had a chance to meet with the caucus in person, so we were taking her up there. And the President said, well, good, because I'm giving her a presidential award for the work that she does. And so to give you an idea of, I guess, how important this award is to Samantha and to us and the association in general, so if you look at, there were two people that were nominated from every state in the country. And out of those two people that were nominated from every state in the country, there was only one person selected for this award. And so she's kind of had a very influential input into what's going on at the national level for telecommunications. For a long time, they concentrated on ESAPs and management stuff. And then one day, they realized that we weren't doing enough for the line level folks and we were concentrating on other things. So the Telecommunicators Caucus stepped in. And one thing that she was directly responsible for is a, it's like a Dear Addie column for telecommunications, it's called GoDy. And they can submit anonymous problems and requests into this Ask GoDy and then their answer back by Samantha or another member of the caucus. And this is something that we've been working on for, or they were working on for quite a while to get this kind of input. And they worked on training issues, bringing national training standards more to the telecommunicators and she's been the forefront of all this, taken the lead on the caucus and ran with it. We're extremely proud, absolutely, that it makes, it means a lot to me when someone outside of our agency recognizes what one of our employees has, particularly at this level. If you would, congratulations, join me and congratulate them.
And that's with your family here. If y'all would come up, family, members come up. This is Samantha. She's our Operations Manager and you'll have to introduce yourself.
This is Renee Morris.
Fantastic. Samantha, would you like to have everything said?
Yeah. She said back to it.
By ten o'clock when she gets awards, it's glad that us, I just move on. But a national award is outstanding and we are so proud of you and of what you do and the work of 911, this fabulous state of Pollin County. Next, the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Detective Perry McGarvey of the Pollin County Sheriff's Office of the Criminal Investigation Division. Gary, I think you have some things to say and Detective, you can come forward.
Good morning, Detective.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to congratulate Samantha myself. Real nice and fit to work with people like that. Her name was here, our Fire Department Sheriff's Office, all the police agents around here, we all get along great together and just get the job done and go home. Samantha's always been a blessing for all of us to work with. Congratulations, make us proud. Down to the next guy. I'd like to introduce y'all, Harry McGarvey, Detective of the Pollin County Sheriff's Office. Harry's been there longer than I have, we're lockdowners, he was a cop back when he was still driving a car with law enforcement. This is a recognition of his exceptional service and commitment to investigations of elder abuse crimes and outstanding service to citizens of Pollin County. I'd like to present the Pollin County Board of Commissioners Public Safety Appreciation Award to Detective Harry McGarvey for the Criminal Investigation Division. Detective McGarvey's been in the Sheriff's Office since 1989. He moved to Criminal Investigation Division in May of '92. Through that tenure with the Sheriff's Office, he's worked successfully to investigate crimes that's proven his dedication to citizens of the county through his hard work. He's consistently shown that he's an asset of the division and the Sheriff's Office as a whole. Detective McGarvey has committed himself to the investigation of elder abuse crimes since 2009. Statute of specific habit issue adults have changed considerably. He has attended many elder abuse specific training classes and works in partnership with the Georgia Department of Human Services, of adult protective service. Detective McGarvey is part of the Call Elder Abuse Task Force. And on June 14th, just this year, he was along with several other detectives that were here for the proclamation and on the Elder Abuse Awareness Day. We at the Pollin County Sheriff's Office strive continuously to provide the best law enforcement positions possible to our citizens. Detective McGarvey, a body of dedication, we desire to bring to our communities and perform to his duties. We're pleased to acknowledge his efforts representing him with this award. I also want to thank Texas Road House, they've given us a place so me and him can go down and have a stay there.
Well, he's already invited me, huh?
Just like he can go ahead and buy his own dinner.
Guys, come on up, we're going to get y'all in this picture. Where's Ash? Somebody take that picture, you can get in this one. Now, come on. You're one of the pretty boys, so you got to.
They're nice and old. They're tired of seeing me on here.
Detective, would you like to say anything?
I'm just honored to serve citizens of Pollin County.
Sheriff, why don't I have you and Joey, if y'all would come to the lecture for a quick We had an incident and we made the news, often we make the news and it's not good news. You don't make it for good news, but we had an incident at the fire department and kind of y'all could give us a little update on the case.
Y'all might need to learn what they do, that's what happens.
Yesterday morning about 10:00 a.m., sitting in my office, about to have a telephone conference. Received a message across the radio, the firefighter was in trouble across our radio. My heart stopped, scared me to death, and 911 jumped on it pretty quick and realized it was Rescue 3 over in New Hope, there on Mount Paper Road. They called Rescue 3, status, injured three personnel, the whole personnel were, they were actually at Mount Paper Park, so the station was empty, and they let them know that Rescue 3's still in quarters. It turned out lucky. A subject had broken into the station and jumped in the rescue truck and he was in a hurry, so he didn't open the garage door and he went through the garage door with the rescue, causing extensive damage to the garage door. And by the time he got through with his little escapade, he had wrecked with another truck. Thankfully, he wasn't hurt and he had told for our rescue property, did a lot of damage to it. And the sheriff then took him to do what they do well and took him into custody. But nobody got hurt. The system worked well, we had checks and balances when it did occur. 911 did a fantastic job keeping me informed. They have IDers on the radio, so they knew where it was coming from. We did a status check, all our personnel, Sheriff's Office, like he said earlier, we all work very well together. And with these days and times with all the crazy people and things happening out there, we know the system works and it did well because we're all working together. So I want to thank them as well for everything they did.
If I understand correctly, the New Hope Division was out training?
Yes, they were at Mount Paper Park about a mile away doing some training and they heard a commotion, they didn't know what it was, but then somebody into the rescue truck.
Sheriff, you want to give us a little more?
I just told him, I said, one good thing about it. And he said, one good thing? And I said, look, patrol car.
You did apprehend the suspect and I believe there was a...
Yeah, once he got out of the vehicle, he tried to take another vehicle, a homeowner confronted him, pretty much told him he was going to take care of this guy, was fleeing, making pictures chasing him, shooting at him. The guy first started trying to protect him because somebody was chasing him, shooting at him, many times, because he was a homeowner, evidently, we got there and took him in and showed us he was not any problem. He's still at the jail this morning and he was just there a while.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. And no one was injured except for the suspect?
He went in there.
Okay. Thank you. I'd also like to give you a little update. I've paid attention to Home Free, which was filmed here in Pollin, where they built 11 houses in eight months and they're in the process of giving them houses away. I believe the last one I saw was number two house he gave away. And they continue to air on Thursday evening at 9:00 on the Fox Network. So it's kind of neat seeing something filmed in Pollin County, that's a great thing. So if you're watching again Thursday night at 9:00 on the Fox Network, the Home Free. There's no invited guests, a bit of words discussion to approve the construction contract for the TPO roof system at Mount Paper Recreation Center G M and the amount of $97,997.
Good morning. Mount Paper Gym was built in 2001 and it was built with a fairly flat roof and we've had trouble for the past couple of years, three, four years. So what this does is it adds a little pitch to the roof and we're recommending to award this to out-of-bill installations. We've done lots of work with them, they hold the state contract as well as several cooperative contracts which are bid out for us to use rather than going through the full four-week process. The total amount is $97,997. We compared this with just re-coding the roofing system that was already there, that was $75,000 and we would say we guarantee it. So we're recommending the $97,997 and it is guaranteed, it comes with a 20-year warranty.
Michael, you want to come forward for a quick second?
And Bruce is also working on that, working with engineering company in that contract.
The technical... We've had some leaks and we've had some problems and that can damage some of the flooring system and...
It has, it has. When we started inspecting, we found several issues up there with the roof. To start with, it had pulled in maybe a foot or so from the sides, allowing a lot of water to seep down the walls. Caused a few mold problems, we started chasing it, as Taffett said, probably four or five years ago. And this is the final step, we've done everything leading up to this and hopefully that will correct the issues.
Bruce, anything you want to add to?
We did a lot of, we had mold issues, we had water getting around the window frames and the vent frames and the fan frames. We took care of all those small jobs and then also we had to upgrade the structure, integrity to the frame to hold this new roof. This TPO roof will consist of an insulation board, so we ought to do better with energy. And then this is the latest and greatest, a plastic rubber membrane that welded seam and will give it 20-year warranty.
That's great. Can, I guess, question for you, can we use Spots dollars?
Yes, we're using Spots dollars for this. This is an improvement to the facility, is that what you said?
Improvement to the facility. Any questions for Bruce or Michael Pepple? Thank you. Reports from committees and departments, we have Dave Munford update on the new 911
I know everybody's interested in seeing where we are, so I brought in some slides of what's going on at the construction site. Before I get into that, I'll take a minute and discuss the trip that we had to Indianapolis where Samantha got her award. I was there for about 11 days and the first part of my week there consisted of a certification program that I've been preparing for for the last couple of years. So I was able to walk out of it as a nationally certified 911 center manager. And as most of you know, I don't like to brag on things that I've done, so this has less to do with what I accomplished while I was there and more as to what my folks were able to accomplish while I was gone. The second part of my week, I actually sat on a Legislative Affairs Committee where we discussed legislative affairs across the country and I was one of four panelists that gave advice to different states that were in attendance as to how to address their legislators, how to build relationships in the political arena. So with all that said, the fact that I'm able to leave and go away for a couple of weeks and do this type of training is a direct testament to the folks that run the 911 center. And I don't mean by me running 911, it's the folks who are there and making operate while I'm gone. Our Deputy Director, our Command Staff, they kept me informed of any issues, the majority of the time, I heard nothing from them. And so that's a direct testament to the folks that we hired and the quality of training we provided. So I appreciate the backing of the Board Commissioner. So just to remind everybody, this is a Spots project with some contribution from the 911 fees that we have in reserve and it is a 911 and Emergency Operations Center. And once again, this is where we started out, several months ago, some of you were out there, this is what it looked like. We had a grove of trees and they've been working at it hard since then, so this is where we are now. We've got, this is the first pour of the foundation and it's got, you can see that this was about two weeks ago. They have all the conduits in place for our fiber and technology that's going to be installed. Everything was ready at that point. This will be the drying end of the first pour and getting ready to make the second pour. And I'll explain why they had to do two pours in just one second. And this is just another view from, once they got the secondary pour in, you can see the board, the form along the, about towards the bottom of the stream, it drops down about six inches. So in most call centers, 911 centers, we have, in one that we're in now, we have a raised flooring set up so that if you, when you walk in, you notice there's a ramp that goes up and all of our wiring, electrical, radio cabling and stuff runs under the floor. It's a lot easier, a lot more effective than it running overhead and dropping down. It reduces clutter in the room and it's a lot easier to manage. When you have problems, you start tracing these cable back. On this particular case, Croft and Associates were diligent about trying to design us a access flooring without having to use ramps because the ramps take up five to 10 feet of space that you can't use for anything else, that you have to walk up in that area. So what they came up with was a solution to recess the side of the 911 center all the way down to the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and including our equipment rooms. So everything in that area is recessed by six inches. So what you do is when you walk through the building, you'll see no, the floor seems level all the way through. As you walk into the 911 center and the EOC and our equipment rooms, you're actually on a access raised flooring that's just depressed down into the foundation. And this allowed us to squeeze every inch out of that room without having to put ramps in. Very, the slab costs a little bit more, but in the long run, a lot more cost effective when we go to running these cables and stuff through. And that was something the architect came up with to help us getting that raised flooring. Initially, we were going to do cable trays and such in the concrete floor and unfortunately that didn't allow us to move equipment around for future needs. So this basically allows you to position desks and stuff anywhere you want, because you can just move the cables to go on with it. We appreciate Croft's attention to that detail. And that's just the second pour, they're getting ready to finish it out. Right now, you can see the, all the IT conduits, all the electrical conduits, all the utilities are in place and ready to be connected. And as you can see a little better, that's where it drops off and goes into the 911. That entire side of the building is Emergency Operations Center and the Communication Center. This will be the exterior side, a brick we picked out and the grounding that we're going to clean this off, throw that in there so you have an idea of what the outside finish is going to look like. This building is designed to be very survivable and then with that, exterior brick on the majority of the building, particularly on the 911 EOC site, it's all. So our status, right now we've completed water, is the water connection has been made, sewage connection has been made, the site drainage has been done, the retention pond is up and it's actually holding water as it drains off the site. We expect this week, Greystone, to be on site to run power in and we are, we're able to get, due to our location, we're able to get redundant power feed from Greystone. So we will actually have power coming into the 911 center from two different substations. If we lose a substation, the other one, there's a switch that will come on and we'll have power transfer within a matter of seconds. To back that up, we'll have one onsite generator, we have a building UPS unit that carries all the essential equipment until the generator starts. And then we actually have a pad for, in the next couple of years, we'll add a separate onsite, smaller generator in case we have a generator failure. And these are all requirements for 911 centers. Some of them are recommendations, but the two generator is going to be a requirement soon, so we went ahead and bought a pad for that. And that way, in the future, we'll be able to put a smaller generator in just for the essential operations of the essential equipment. The main generator will carry everything in the building, including air conditioning and heat, which we don't have now. When our power goes out, we lose heating and air conditioning at the 911 center. The new generator is designed to carry the entire building and the systems inside the building for an extended period of time. The curb and gutter should be poured this week and we're in the process of making a transition plan. And the transition plan for 911 center is a little bit different than moving an office building around because we can't, we can't not take 911 calls and answer radios during the time of transition. So it's a little more complex and we started it and we'll have that finished up. Right now, the, they anticipate us being able to move in in February instead of March, they're actually about a month ahead of schedule. And that will probably stay the same unless we have weather issues and so, so we're starting our transition planning, so we'll be ready when they're ready. On Thursday, we've got a meeting with all of our technology vendors, we're going to place our orders for 911 trunks, powder, telephone lines, we're going to have that ready and get our orders in place. Will, IT has been instrumental in helping us design the facilities inside and helping us deal with the vendors as far as knowing what we're going to have to turn up on. I know you're interested in subcontractors, so about 90% of the subcontractors, they've been able to make awards who were local. As a matter of fact, the first five of the six subcontractors are all local businesses. The, one of the few things they haven't been able to do local, of course, was likely steel framework. And right now, that's one of our challenges because we're competing with the Braves Stadium and a lot of other buildings this time of year. So we're expecting steel to be onsite and walls to start going up late July and maybe early August, so we'll actually see it come off the ground then. The technology is always a challenge because even though we put the orders in, we're hoping that AT&amp;T and all those deliver and of course moving technology isn't the issue, so we've got to be able to move from one to the other without any interruption in services. And then weather is, you know, our other challenge because lately we've had really good weather for, for building, not so good for the drought circumstances. But if that continues, then it'll move forward, but if we have, you know, a period of rain, that's when it'll, of course, slow it down some. But we're seeing a lot of progress, really happy with the, with the construction company, with the C-MO we were awarded too. They have been very cognizant of our budget requirements. They are right now under budget and ahead of schedule, which is what we like to see. The steel is kind of up in the air, we're not sure how that pricing is going to come in. But, you know, we are at this point under what we had budgeted to be at at this stage. Bruce Foyle has contributed a lot of expertise to this and I appreciate it. I'm sure I'm missing somebody because the Fire Department's been involved in the EMA side and we, this is a huge joint effort by a lot of different county agencies. DOT has assisted us and so there's, I'm sure I've missed people, but I apologize to those I didn't name out. We're, right now, we're very pleased with the way we're moving forward.
Just attended the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia for a Board of Managers meeting. And two different people told me they plan to visit our county and study our new 911 center and also have a chance to talk today. He's been very involved at the state. Had to take part of the burden off of us and put it back on companies that it belongs to. For instance, if there is a line coming into a home or a line coming into a business, you pay a 911 fee. What we didn't know is sometimes... you pay a 911 fee, what we didn't know is sometimes there's a dozen, and in a call center, there's more than that. So Dave's been very productive in working on legislation, it didn't make it through last year, this year it looks like it will make it through, and I have to thank you for that, because it's fees that companies were already supposed to be paying, that they weren't paying, so.
And to give you an idea, in Paulding County alone, that would impact the 911 center's revenues by probably anywhere from $600,000 to $1 million that we aren't collecting now, and that we should be collecting. And that's just in our county, you know, across the state, it's a long thing that's...
Thank you for all you do. Any questions today? I'm excited about it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, could any departments, Sheriff Gary Phillips, give us an update? Open and steadily thunder walking out.
Yeah. Late night, please, I know you've got a lot of time to do today, so I said, listen to me talk. Thank you, y'all, all the coffee, it's getting a little time here, I'm only a hour out for the public, so they'll know what we've been doing. Like I said, the sheriff's office, we've been extremely busy again. I would like to tell you that we're still living in Mayberry, I'm afraid Mayberry has run off the west, because we're not in Mayberry anymore, so, you know, if you're out and about, perhaps each of your surroundings, what's what's going on? You see anything that you think we need to know about, please pick up the phone, call us and let us know. I tell people all the time, if you don't, if you don't tell us what's going on, maybe we don't know it. Yesterday, a big thing for us, I heard that this same guy tried to get in the car over the family that was coming down the road, you know, and I don't think they called us, maybe they would have, we would have intercepted before he got the fire truck. You never know what you're dealing with, and if you've got any questions about what's going on, people can call, we don't mind coming and checking it out at all. In the high points of this, the reports from January to later this year, the sheriff's office drove 1B at 270,000 miles during the previous months. We've reached a total of 1,769 individuals, issued 2,963 traffic citations, we had 27,650 complaints that was answered during that time. High volume calls were 2,252 alarms, 1,211 domestics, 792 lockouts, 2,640 subpoenas and civil papers we served, we transported 303 prisoners, answered 2,100 date suspicious incidents, whether it's persons or vehicles, 1,168 towed and taken burglaries and inter autos. Inter autos are still a big thing throughout the state. If you have a vehicle, if you parked it in your driveway, please don't leave it alone and it's safe. Remove your valuables, lock your car, it'll help us tremendously, because these teenagers are still going through subdivisions, going driveway to driveway, hitting the locks that they open, they're going through your car. The last bus we caught was in DeKalb County, so they're coming from other places, coming by the carloads, and they're just running through baby hoods and pimping through your stuff. So if you've got anything available in your vehicle, please remove it and secure your car, it'll help us a whole lot. Plus, most of your stuff that they take, nobody has serial numbers on it, the GPS units, it's laptops, it's bill folders, it's cash money, I surprise the stuff, they can leave in your cars, but if you remove it, it'll make your life and everything a whole lot During these months, we've also performed 5,085 traffic stops, 1,450 warrants was cleared, 233 zone patrols, and we had 712 juvenile incident reports, 225 of those were assigned, and 299 was charged. That's the short version.
What does the sign mean?
What's what?
When you say 225 assigned?
I don't know.
And 225, you, your bottom figure, 225 assigned and 299 charged?
That was assigned, so the detectives will look at it. Some of them comes in, or basically there's nothing to be with, it's just reports that was generated. If they're assigned to the detective, they look at them, and then the 299 people actually have charges taken on them.
The gentleman that y'all called, that stole the fire vehicle, he had already been injured?
Yeah, just got out.
So that repeats.
It's got a lot to do with a certain division, this state is setting down prison beds, and they're setting down little hospitals, and dumping it back in the county's lap, they're causing us all kind of problems. I don't know if it's ever going to get any better, but, you know, everybody says, we'll put them in prisons, not to answer, we'll put them back in the community, they ain't been answering either, so, you know, it's my job to keep this community safe, and they're not making my job any easier. You know, the mental health people that want to treat them in the county, so they'll be in, I'll agree, but some of them can be treated here, I agree that some of them need to be in a place away from the public, they don't need to be out here. State's got a lot of work to do, hope they're money safe, the techniques.
Thanks, Sheriff.
My pleasure.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for what you did.
My pleasure. Also a public safety announcement, if, if you're out riding around, please don't test the drive.
You're looking at me. Gary, you're doing outstanding job keeping the state, thank you so much. Public participation on agenda items, there's no one time, consent agenda none, or business none. New business, discuss action authorized, chairman to enter into a contract, and meeting and lineback engineers, incorporated an amount of $58,860 for engineering design services for the Greenfield Road widening drainage project. This is Scott Green, and this is in close range.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for...
This is perfect.
Okay, can you... Thank you for letting me bring this item to you. At any given time, we've got 50 projects we're managing in our engineering department. We have our engineers here with us, Kathy, Derek, and Erica, and their hands are quite full, particularly as we ran...
How about y'all standing for a second, let us write that?
Thanks for coming. They didn't know... In addition to handling a lot of the projects you see up here that we bring to you, they handle a lot of citizen calls, they investigate drainage complaints, street lights, other utility issues, they do a lot of work behind the scenes that you are probably not completely aware of. But their hands are full, and as we lead into the next Splosh, we're going to be ramping up our engineering activities to get projects ready for construction. One of those projects we have here in front of you today is an engineering contract to improve Greenfield Road. It's part of a drainage repair that was pretty urgent, and then while we're in there digging up the road and replacing the old system that's out there, we want to extend some turn lanes and make it similar to what we have on the other side of 278 at Metromont with the center turn lane. And it's just about 600 feet long. We're going to have to do, probably have to close the road to do a lot of this work, it's very heavily congested with utilities, sewer lines, gas line, and probably something we try to schedule during the summer when traffic is lower. We do not want to wait until next summer to get the engineering ready, we want to be ready in case we have more problems. Many of you probably know, we had a major repair earlier, let's see, probably in 2015, and then we had one Saturday unplanned. Friday night through Saturday about noon, we had Greenfield Road closed at this location because of a failing pipe that we were able to patch together and put some more concrete on top, and hopefully shore it up to get us to the point where we can actually award the project to improve this area. But this, getting this engineering started now will be, will put us in a better position to have that work done, we have to do it more on an emergency basis. I appreciate all the work our engineering staff does, and they work very well with good consultants that we hire, they work hand in hand. The larger projects, the more complex projects, typically we do farm that out to consultants, and that supplements our activities, it helps us spend more time with the citizen, the hands-on things that we just can't get to an outside group to handle.
Well, that's also done in the state, am I correct?
Quite a bit nowadays, it's, most engineering is done consultant nowadays, more than half. We want to be in a position where we always retain that expertise, it'd be hard to manage a consult if you didn't know what they were doing, or what they had to do as far as requirements and all that. So we do have that in-house, we certainly could design very complicated projects in in-house, but we can't handle the volume, and we will continue to partner like this in the future as we deliver the Splosh program. I mentioned, this is part drainage improvement and part roadway improvement. This will be some hybrid funding, we anticipate funding the drainage work with general fund in our, out of our stormwater line item, and then the actual widening and the improvements. We do improve traffic flow with the charges in Splosh. I don't know what that percentage will be, but I would, I would guess in the name of a 50/50, but we will let you know later, I'll work with Taffet on how we split that funding, and particularly when we get to the larger item, which will be awarded in the bid, we'll know how to, how to account for that. Do you have any questions on this? I'd be glad to answer them, if I can.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much.
Great conversation. That is the conclusion of regular business session, there's no executive session. Public participation on non-attend items, no one signed us. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Say.
Motion second, any discussion? All of the papers say aye. Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.